Everyone and welcome to the town council public hearing for Thursday, April eighth on our proposed budget for 2021 and 2022. If you will, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So tonight we are going to have a presentation by the town manager on our proposed 2021, 2022 budget. So I will turn it over to town manager mayor.
And I'm here at the public hearing to present the proposed budget for the town for 2021, 22. Just to make note, notice this meeting, it's a public hearing, excuse me, was put into the rare reminder, it was noticed in the rare reminder on 4/1 2021. Before I get started, just want to say, this is my 23rd budget that I've been involved with. And this one has, this in the past year has had some unique challenges where this is the first time that we really emphasized the need to wear masks and PPEs and quarantine and working from home and social distancing and developing a talent to do a Zoom meeting, all related to the COVID pandemic. Also, this is another first in which property tax payments were delayed two months. So that instead of getting them on normal time, we would get it spread over two months. And want to thank the taxpayers of Rocky Hill for following up and making their tax payments so that we have a pretty good collection rate despite this COVID situation. And the last one is very unique is the American Rescue Plan. The town is supposed to be getting 1.9 million dollars from the, I believe, through, from the federal government to help us, help out on this COVID situation. But the only problem is we don't know what we can spend the money on. So none of that so-called almost a million dollars that we're supposed to be getting in May 1st has been incorporated into this budget. But the latest word I've heard is that the guidelines from the Treasury Department will be coming out hopefully by May 10th of this year. Also beside the town's getting half of its 1.9 million dollars or $993,000. The Board of Ed is also supposed to be getting close to $890,000. The overview of the agenda for tonight is basically to review past projects and refer, past referendums and projects, the debt service, revenue expenditures associated with the town, Board of Ed, as well as capital improvements. Over the past about eight years, the town voters have passed about six resolution, referendums for various projects from renovating the high school, a public safety improvement program which included purchasing fire trucks as well as upgrading the police dispatch area as well as its jail. Building of the Mozier School, into Mozier Intermediate School, which helped relieve the explosive enrollment growth at elementary schools over the years and reduced the town's need to purchase or lease modular classrooms. Road is also approved renovating the and expanding the community senior center. Did a second round of 10 million dollars for road improvements throughout the town as well as purchasing the Stratsker Farm property. Now, in order to do these projects, the town has issued a number of 20-year bonds over the past six and a half years. And with that, that has caused the town's debt service to grow quite rapidly. So far for the neck out for the budget year 2021, 22, principal payments on those bonds are about 5.1 million dollars, an increase of almost $360,000 over last year. An increase in interest payments of about 2.9 million or an increase of $31,000 over last year. So as you can see on the schedule that the town, starting on June 21st, have about $77 million in debt. But after making these payments, the June 30th, 2022 number should be just a little over $72 million. One thing that, good news is that next year will be the last payment that we'll be making on the 2010 refunding bond, which this year will cost $445,000. But on the other side, the town, it issue 11 mil, 11 million, 35, 11 million dollars of bands, primarily for the for the building of the community center, renovation of the community center. Those bands will be due on July 28th of this year and most likely those bands will be turned into bonds, 20-year bonds, and we might increase it another two or four million dollars relating to road referendum fees for road improvements over the next couple, couple of years. One item to note is that all that talk about the, the infrastructure bill in Washington, attached to that bill is legislation that would amend the federal tax code and allow local governments to use advanced refunding to manage to buy bond debt and reduce borrowing costs and so on. This advanced refunding was, has not been allowed since 2017. And what it does is make these refunding bonds federally exempt from tax, federal tax. And then then allows the town to refinance at a lower rate in order to generate savings. So by making it a non-taxable bond, you probably make three times the savings as you would if it was a tax, taxable transaction. So if this legislation gets passed, town will definitely be refunding the the 2014 issue for 18 million and 10 and hopefully generate savings for the town. Now to switch over to the revenue side, pretty much it's a, from a revenue standpoint, there was no growth in there. The, the grand list didn't grow much. The state grants didn't grow at all, but pretty much getting the same amount of money. Our investment income didn't grow much because of the lower interest rates and so on. So the, about the only, the, in fact, the only way for the town to generate revenue is through property taxes. So on next page, you can see how the grand list compared from October 20 to October 2019 with very little growth at all, less than 1%, 0.58% minimal increase. Therefore, in order to generate revenues to, to cover our town budget this year, we're looking to increase the mill rate by two mills. So we go from 33.6 to 35.6, approximately a 6% increase. This would generate 79 million dollars in tax revenue. Now comparing what the increase would impact to a house assessed at about $200,000, it would be a $400 increase or $33 a month. The state revenue side, again, same as last year, except the only difference is the town used some of its low-set money savings, approximately $400,000. And that money went towards the streetscape project along the Silas team. We used it as the town's contribution to the, through the project. So that was like a one, two, one-time revenue source, but it was offset by expenditures on the, on the, on the other side, on the, on the expenditure side. So, so there wasn't any real growth. In fact, it was some lost revenue on the state side. We did use some fund balance in this, in the coming year's budget at the end of last year, the fund balance was at 6.66%. And there's that ordinance in which the town would transfer anything above 6% in fund balance to be used as capital and capital improvements in the next year's budget. So for 21, 22, $382,000 was being transferred in for our capital improvements. The town's projecting that it would come in with about a year end of 2000, is projecting for a year and June 30th, 2021, a fund balance of approximately 6.48%. So we use an additional $750,000 of fund balance to help cover town's operational expenses. So the total fund balance used is about 1.1 million dollars. Going to the expenditure side, this is the the increase of expenditures over last year is about 3.9 million dollars or 4.5%. The schedule here sort of shows the breakout of the $89 million proposed expenditure budget out goes to the various categories where town operating expenses make up 35%, Board of Ed operating makes up almost 54%. And debt services is just about 9% of the next year's budget. Next page has a pie chart that's, but it shows how the total expenditures is split by the major categories. You can see there's a lot of blue in this that's a screen. The next page has on it the breakdown by the major categories and how the 3.9% increase is spread out among those groups. And what the percentage, what the, the, the amount of the mill rate is being used to cover that, that increase. So the town general government budget decreased by 1.2 million dollars, but take about 0.65 tenths of a mill as well as education went up about 1.7 million. So they're using about 0.89 of a mill to cover that increase. And another pie chart that shorter reflects the, the, the use of the increased mill rate of 2.0 mill rate increase. On the town side, some of the expenses that are driving this increase are salary increases contractually agreed upon at about $352,000 as well as adding two positions to in the police patrol area department and one in the facilities for full-time custodian once the finished community senior center gets on, onboard. The planning department has to put together a housing, affordable housing plan, recommendations from our actuarial, increased contributions to the defined benefit, for defined benefit plans. Solid waste is increasing primarily due to mirror increasing the tipping fee for disposal of solid waste, $10. Motor fuel oil prices are higher this year than in the past year. IT is beating up the, the internet in town. This website security. We're appropriating money for the opening of the community senior center so that we could have perhaps additional staffing, increased monies for the food with lunches as well as the cafe as well as for programming. The insurance market is what they call, I guess, the hard market as of right now. And premiums are increasing as compared to past years, as well as the town did have a few claims that were submitted that also affected the premium. Contingency was increased due to the potential retirement so that some of the employees that are entitled to payouts on vacation and sick time, the funding would be there to pay those off. We did have a few savings, switching employees in various unions as the union contracts have been negotiated and approved. Switching them over from the PPO plan that was in place for years over to a deductible plan. We see about a $200,000 savings in that. And then our friends down in Hartford at the MDC kept their ad valorem tax flat. But due to the MDC being on a calendar year compared to the town being on a fiscal year, that timing difference generated about $77,000 in savings for the town on that. So a couple of good notes, but our few the Board of Education adopted their budget around March 12th for 48 million, too. I did not make any cuts to it. They're telling me that they will not come to the their presentation and open up their statement by saying that they had a great deal of savings in the health plan and they don't, they're reducing it by a couple hundred thousand dollars. They told me they weren't going to do that. I did not want to do anything to this because of this co-buy situation that we've been dealing with for over the past year and the trials and tribulations that the school administration had opening their schools up this year with various new costs that probably was not budgeted for, budgeted for associated with this, this social distancing at the classrooms, still keeping them the sterilization of the, of the classrooms as well as additional employees to monitor buses and so on. So their increase was about 1.7 million dollars or 3.75% over the previous year. Some of you might remember this screen from Monday night, but it sort of reflects the major categories. The Board of Education, which is very salary-driven as well as benefit-driven, making up a high percentage of their expenditures. So that they are driven by increases associated with contractual salaries and so on as well as benefits and increase in the transportation costs. And this year, next year, excuse me, they're looking to add a human resource coordinator to the central office. So the Board of Ed is scheduled to come in on May 4th at 5:30 to talk about their budget and hopefully they can expand upon how they're going to be doing their American Rescue money. American Rescue Plan money that they should be receiving from the federal government. I'm moving into the capital improvement side. These are items that we've been sort of budgeting for on a regular basis on past year's budget, putting money aside for the upcoming recent revaluation. The in 2023, we're trying to finish up re-roofing Fire Station Number Three. I, and the town has committed a number of leases for equipment and vehicles that are in various payback stages for right now. But on the next page is some of the newer items that we put into the budget. The first one is to start establishing a funding towards the Stratsker Farm Improvement Fund. This year, we just picked up $125,000 looking towards using that fund to at least remove current structures on, on the location, the houses and any barns. Any remediation that may be necessary. It seems like we're, we did have a test, a firm intend to do some environmental testing on the property using funds that are remaining from our bond offering. And there may be some concerns about arsenic and so on. So if we need to do any remediation, we can use that funding as well as if we start moving along with the state grant that we're hoping to receive on our bond, excuse me, barn, use some of that money to hopefully do some of the site work. The, the senior center is just a reserve for items that we might need. Once the facility gets open, Parks Department wants to get in and do some upgrading and renovations to the McFicker Field turf. They also want to begin a process over the next few years of renovating or upgrading the various athletic fields. The first one they wanted to work on is the Sunny Crest Baseball Field, which is more of what, updating myself, is like a Babe Ruth Field used by the high school age players. This field, the drainage needs to be improved so that it can be used more in the, the spring so that it's not taken offline to, to wetness and so on. And it would also alleviate the overuse of the high school field by many other teams beside just the Park Hill High School team. The facilities department would like to get a sort of a Bobcat type of piece of equipment, especially to help for, for the snow removal of the new town hall campus. Once the community center is completed and so on, which will be expanding sidewalks and so forth. After the winter season, this piece of equipment would be available for the parks and the highway department if they need, need, have a use for it. Parks is requesting an attachment to their, one of their Bobcat, their Bobcat that they currently have. That'd be used a bit, it would be quite helpful in removing a brush and so on in the, in the trails. The various trails throughout the town, the highway department needs to replace one of their leaf collecting units as well as beginning a snow power replacement program. So we're looking to this to be the first year for that and moving on. To get, get, excuse me, did get requests for some vehicles that have been either beyond their use age-wise as well as being deadlined by the highway department garage. So the fire department mechanic is looking for a new pickup truck to, so that they can use that to go on location if one of the trucks, fire trucks break down while it's out in the field. The highway department liked to get a freight and, excuse me, a frame and cab dump truck and then put on the dump piece from one of the existing trucks. And then our facilities department trades van was deadline and they need a new van to store their equipment as a tour, the town to the various buildings to form repairs and so on. The Board of Education came in with a couple of requests. The first one relates to West Hill School. I guess it's replacing the HVAC equipment. Total cost of that project came in, request came in at about 1.3 million dollars. But I believe the Board of Ed will be going for an elementary, secondary school grant or ESA grant through the State Department of Education for approximately $850,000. So with, so to get with that and the 450,000 would get us to the 1.3 billion dollars. They anticipate the cost of the project would be. Again, they were, they want to begin replacement of school furniture at the two elementary schools. And in the past, town council has allotted a certain dollar amount to the board to make some minor repairs to, to, to any of the school facilities. So wrap things up. The proposed budget is 80 mil, 89,695,602 increase of 4.5% over last year. The proposed mill rate is 35.6 mills, an increase of two mills or approximately 6%. I want to, before, this is the upcoming schedule of budget workshops as well as the date when the budget has to be adopted per town charter. However, Governor Mon issued executive order 10E the other day within which it allows municipalities to adopt a new adoption date for their town budget as long as it gets adopted by June 30th. The, the town council would have to approve a date. If they wanted to change it from the May 17th date, they would have to take action before May 20th to do that. But the May 17th date has been working well for the town over the years. And it gives our tax departments a jump on preparing tax bills and getting those out. Again, I I want to thank Mona for all her work on this year's budget and all she did for pulling this together until a few minutes ago, and it was questionable, but she did get the, the screens, PowerPoint up on the screens. And with that, I end my presentation and turn it back to you, Mayor Marata. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mona. We so appreciate all of your hard work. And we're going to move on now to our public comment portion. And this portion of the meeting is specifically set aside for comments from the public who are asked to limit their comments to two minutes. Any person interested in providing public comment should email publicmeetings@rockyhillct.gov or telephone 860-258-7682 to request an invite. And you will then be provided with a link or a telephone number to attend the Zoom remote meeting and instructions on how you will participate. So I'm going to look in my chat box to see. I will ask Mr. Murphy if we have any.
Madam Mayor, we just have one. It's Lori Bosky.
Okay. So Ms. Bosky, if you would please state your name and address, please.
Lori Bosky, 18 Highland Street, Rocky Hill. I didn't realize I was the only one. Thank you. And I just wanted to first And, uh, I just wanted to first, thank you all very much for your hard work already um, in preparing the budget for twenty one, twenty two. Um, I, as a Board of Education member, I understand the difficulty, difficult times you have in trying to squish it all together and set priorities and say yes and say no. So it is a difficult task and I know for the council, the difficult time is up and coming in the next few weeks when you really look at all the different departments. I also realized that there's not rare much room there with an only point five eight percent increase in the grand list. So we really have to look at, um, where we have, where we can get our money. Um, I have looked through the hundred and sixteen pages of the document, not with a fine tooth comb. Um, so, uh, I realize in working with my board of ed budget, there's not a lot of wiggle room in a lot of areas. I mean, we're bound by a lot of, uh, certain contracts and, and pieces and bonding and things of that sort. So a lot of the expenses that we have are fixed. Um, so I'm, I'm really not going to try to defend one particular area of the budget, although the Board of Education is near and dear to my heart. So obviously I'm going to say, you know, our children are, are very important and the Board of Ed budget is very important because Rocky Hill is known for its great education. And also having been a member of the town for over twenty seven years, I realized that we really have to maintain what we have. So in order to do that, I mean, kind of like owning a house. I've lived in my house for twenty seven years. And if I didn't keep up with the roof and the repairs and all that kind of stuff, I'd be hit with something major. So I understand from a town point of perspective, it's important to also make sure that we're maintaining what we need to maintain. I do ask that as you listen to all the department presentations in the next, in the few weeks, um, I ask you to do your best to be as creative as possible with the limited resources that we have. My dog is now starting to agree. Um, in using our limited resources to reduce the increase for our working families and our seniors. And as I am getting closer to that Medicare age, I'm months away. Um, I can certainly speak for the seniors in saying that, you know, it is important for our concerns to be met as well. I also ask that you be, um, as efficient and equitable as possible so that we meet the needs for all of our taxpayers from the very young with our wonderful park and rec services to our seniors with our senior center. Um, and I really thank you really for all the work you've done. And I'm looking forward, I will be watching and I, uh, on all the presentations and see how we go through this process. And I, again, I appreciate all that you're doing and I look forward to a equitable budget for next year. Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to our next item, if we have nobody else in public comment. Um, I think I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is that? Okay, there's a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again, uh, John and Mona. Good night, everyone.
Night.